This time I'll call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Harlingen City Commission which has been duly posted to order and call upon Commissioner Richard Hoodie to deliver the meeting.
Dear Lord, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. We thank you for the opportunity to come and gather together this day. We ask for your hand of blessing on this meeting. We ask that you would guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping us accomplish our work and our goals this day. Amen.
Ma'am, please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge is to the right of the United States of America and to the public which stands: One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice in all.
Welcome everybody to our city commission meeting. Glad to have you all here, just like church, in the middle of the summer and attendance drops off. Item one is the approval of the minutes of the joint meeting of the city commission and the development corporation in Harlingen of June 14, 2017, and the regular meetings of June 21, 2017, and July 5, 2017. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing now, is there a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries. Items two through E, consent agenda, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Sub move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. As opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item three, consideration and possible action to adopt a resolution approving the one-year action plan budget for fiscal year 2017-18, year 43, of the community development block grant CBG program in fiscal year 2017-18, year 23, of the home investment partnership program. Tammy?
Good evening. Prior to the adoption of the one-year action plan, we have to have a 30-day comment period to receive comments. We've not received any that were in opposition of the funding allocations and the recommendations of the agencies and the projects to fund. Therefore, recommend that you approve the resolution and we'll prepare the action plan and send it to HUD on or about the 16th of August. Any questions?
Okay. You know, a lot of these boys, you need to understand. I don't know.
Give them that extension form, just in case.
Okay, well, we're ready to take action?
Yes.
All right, is there a motion to?
We're gonna let him walk out first. Just in case he was a question.
He's as good as gone. About five minutes ago.
I make the motion we adopt this resolution?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item four, consideration and possible action to approve the acceptance of the Texas State Library and Archives Commission Texas Reads Grant, the amount of $4,575.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. The Texas State Library and Archives Commission, TSLAC, has awarded the Harlingen Public Library a grant in the amount of $4,575. No matching funds are required for this grant. The Harlingen Public Library and the Boys and Girls Club of Harlingen will work together to create reading rooms at all three Boys and Girl Club centers. The reading rooms will house small rotating collections of books appropriate for children in grades kindergarten through eighth grade. Staff recommends approval and thank you for your consideration.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the acceptance of the grant?
Sub move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item five, consideration and possible action to allow license to encroach 12.3 feet into the city, 12.3 feet of right-of-way along Southwest Street to allow an additional parking area and continue allowing existing fence and a license to encroach at 14.7 feet into the city, 14.7 feet of right-of-way along A Street to allow an additional parking area for the property located at 121 West Tyler Avenue bearing legal description of lots 1 and 2, Block 92, Harlingen Regional Townsite.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. The applicant is requesting a license to encroach of 12.3 feet on West Street to allow for additional parking in accordance with existing fences that's encroaching on right-of-way. They're also asking for a license to encroach of 14.7 feet on A Street to allow for additional parking on the subject property. This is a subject property, you can see it's on the south side of Tyler Avenue between West and A Street. As you can see, part of the parking space, based on the surveys, is encroaching on the right-of-way, as well as the remaining right-of-way is also paved with asphalt. There's also an existing six-foot chain link fence that's on the right-of-way, which is pretty much about six inches from back of the curb. And of course, this is a street view to look at the subject properties for go with Joe Tour to travel. This is the existing parking area. This parking space is actually in the right-of-way, part of it is, and of course you have the remaining right-of-way that's paved with asphalt. Technically, the way the parking sits in the fence is technically grandfathered. What triggered the license to encroach is they're gonna remove the existing asphalt and replace it with new asphalt, as well as they're gonna do some repair work to the fence, plus remove the existing asphalt that's in this parking area and also in the right-of-way. They're gonna replace it with the concrete. City Engineering Department and the utility companies have reviewed and approved the request. The applicant has also submitted the certificate of liability insurance regarding the subject right-of-way and it was approved by the Human Resources Director. Staff has recommended the approval with the condition that in the event of the emergency, city crews and utility companies will have access to the right-of-way to do emergency work. Of course, any damage then to the improvements within the right-of-way will be the responsibility of the applicant. I'll take any questions on the item.
I have a couple of questions. They remodeled that, right? That's fairly new, maybe within the year?
They did.
Is that part of the reason for them needing more parking? Or did that?
That was part of it, although they mainly just wanna improve the asphalt because it's in bad conditions.
Okay, and my second question is if you're gonna put a fence there, is it gonna obstruct view, or is there a street behind it that will obstruct view for traffic to get through?
It wouldn't obstruct the view.
There's a neighborhood behind it, right?
It wouldn't obstruct the view because it's a chain link fence, so it's visible through that fence. That fence has been there for many years, it's never had a problem with that fence there.
So essentially, nothing is changing other than new pavement?
Right, correct.
Or new asphalt.
Right, new asphalt and new concrete in the back of the property.
The footprint of the building stays the same?
Stays the same, there's no change to the building at all.
That's what I was gonna ask. The footprint didn't change. The only thing that's really happening is we had already allowed this, but they have to make some changes, so will those changes come up?
Right, correct.
A renewal of the permit.
Right, correct.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item six, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to rezone from residential mobile home district to general retail district for the south, 415 feet of Lot 1, Block 1, Rita subdivision, located at 4226 South Expressway 83.
Mayor, Commissioners, the applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property from a mobile home district to general retail district to allow for proposed future commercial use on the subject property. This is a subject property, you can see it's technically one complete lot, zoned by the same property owner, and as you can see, the frontage of this lot is already zoned general retail. The south 415 feet of this property was previously zoned general retail, however, in 1983, the applicant or the property owner requested to rezone it to a mobile home, as he wanted a mixed-use development at that time. This is a street view of the subject property, as you can see, it's currently vacant. Subject property has about 123 frontage and a depth of about 760 feet. You see an area view of the property. Generally, the area is developed with commercial use along the frontage of the property. Of course, the future land use plan shows this area as general retail, so the request is consistent with the future land use plan. Public hearing was conducted by the P&amp;Z Commission. There was no concerns addressed at the meeting. We also notified the property owners within a 200-foot radius. Again, no concerns or objections to the request. Staff and P&amp;Z are recommending approval of the request. I'll take any questions on the item.
If anybody have any questions, I'll go to the public hearing. Item A, public hearing, is anyone that'd like to speak for or against this rezoning? Hearing now, I'll close the public meeting and go to item B, which is to consider consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading to rezone the above-described property from residential mobile home district to general retail district, and I ask the city attorney to read the caption.
Yes, Mayor. An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Harlingen, rezoning from residential mobile home, NH, district to general retail, GR, district for the south 415 feet of Lot 1, Block 1, Rita subdivision, located at 4,226 South Expressway 83, providing publication and ordaining other matters related to the program.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance at first reading?
Sub move.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item seven, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading to rezone from residential multifamily M2 district to general retail, GR, district for Lot 14, Block 11, Arroyo Estates subdivision, located at 1664 San Houston Drive. Applicant is George.
Mayor, Commissioners, the applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property from residential multifamily to general retail district to allow for future commercial use on the subject property. This is a subject property, as you can see, it's on the west side of San Houston Drive. Subject property has about 120 feet of frontage on San Houston, a depth of about 202 feet at its longest point. This is actually the site of the former fire station, subject property, and of course, if you look at it from the north, you see there's commercial views to the south of the property along, as well as office use to the east of the property. And of course, from the south, this is existing commercial uses. This is an area view map of the property, this is a, to the south, this is a subject property. Of course, to the south, you can see the commercial use, strip plazas which are to the south of this property, and of course, to the east of the property, it's zoned office district, and you have a home health business. Of course, further to the north, you have an apartment complex. Future land use shows this area as, what you see in red is retail, so the request is consistent with a future land use plan. We got a public hearing before the P&amp;Z Commission, there was no concerns addressed at the meeting. Property owners within a 200-foot radius were notified, again, no objections to the request. Staff and P&amp;Z are recommending approval of the request. I'll take any questions on the item.
All right, does anybody have any questions? Go to item A, and open the public hearing, and is there anyone that'd like to speak for or against this rezoning? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing and go to item B, which is consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading to rezone the above-described property from residential multifamily district to retail, to general retail district, and ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Harlingen, rezoning from residential multifamily M2 district to general retail, GR, district for Lot 14, Block 11, Arroyo Estates subdivision, located at 1,664 San Houston Drive, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the program.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance at first reading?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item eight, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow adult business microblading studio in a general retail, GR, district located at 1237 North 77 Sunshine Strip, bearing a legal description of lots 7 through 9, Block 8, Crown Heights subdivision. Applicant Cynthia Contu de La.
Mayor, Commissioners, the applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow a microblading studio out of her existing hair salon business that she has in the Sunshine Plaza. This is a subject property, it's located on the south side of Sunshine Strip, just east of 7th Street. This is a site plan she submitted. Technically, it's a second suite from the right of your facing building. This is a street view of the subject suite, it's a second suite. Generally, the hours of operation would be from Monday through Friday, from 10 to 5:30 PM, and of course, on Saturday, from 10 to 3 PM. Building, Fire, and Health Department have reviewed and approved the request. A public hearing was conducted, there was no concerns addressed at the meeting. Staff and P&amp;Z Commission will recommend approval subject to the applicant, maintaining their existing parking and landscaping, obtaining their proper permits, and of course, compliance with the appropriate city departments. I'll take any questions on the item.
Didn't this come up once already, or is this a different business?
This is a different business. The other one was on, over here, by McKelvey Park.
Okay, so it's a different business.
Right, correct.
Any other questions? I'll go to the public hearing, item A. Open the public hearing, is anyone that'd like to speak for or against this rezoning? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing and go to item B, which is consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow adult business microblading studio at the above-described property, and ask the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Harlingen to issue a specific use permit, SUP to Cynthia Contu de La, to allow an adult business microblading studio in the general retail, GR, district located at 1,237 North 77 Sunshine Strip, bearing a legal description of lots 7 through 9, Block 8, Crown Heights subdivision, for the following provisions: One, providing and maintaining the required off-street parking spaces in accordance with city regulations. Two, maintaining the existing landscaping. Three, obtaining and maintaining the proper state permits. And four, complying with the requirements administered by the planning, building inspections, health, fire prevention departments, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the program.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance at first reading?
So moved.
Motion second?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item nine, public hearing to consider an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow a storage building greater than 144 square feet in a single-family residential R1, district located at 506 West Louisiana Street, bearing a legal description of Lot 3, Block 1, Gerlach subdivision, applicant Cisco Carr.
Mayor, Commissioners, the applicant is requesting a specific use permit to allow a storage building greater than 144 square feet in a residential district. Technically, the total size of that storage building is 606 square feet. This is a subject property, it's located on Louisiana Street, actually on the east side of Louisiana, west side of Louisiana, Louisiana Street. This is a street view of the subject property, you can see there is an existing single-family residence on the property. The size of the lot has about, frontage of about 52 feet and the depth of the lot is about 157 feet. This is the rear of the property, and actually, the existing storage building that's on the property, which is technically already built, it was built without permits, so basically, staff is working backwards with the property owner to bring him in compliance with the ordinance. Normally, this type of request is processed administratively, however, we get a written complaint within the 10 days that it is advertised, it requires a public hearing before the city commission, so in this case, we got two property owners who had a concern with the request. Their main concern was the size of the structure, as well as that it was done without permits. The proposed use, according to the application and to the applicant, is gonna be for storage and like a game room for his family. The staff is recommending approval with the condition that the applicant obtained the proper permits. I'll take any questions on the item.
So this'll be approximately three and a half, four times the maximum, 12 by 12, 144 square feet?
Right. Well, technically, for a 144 square feet structure, they don't need any permits, but if it's gonna be larger than 144 square feet, they need a specific use permit.
On that, is that on a concrete foundation?
It's on a concrete foundation, correct.
And does that square footage include, what looks like a carport?
It does include the carport, correct.
So are they gonna remodel that, or that is the structure, it's gonna stay centralized as?
That's the structure the way it is. Of course, he's gonna have to apply for the proper permits, he's gonna have to submit an engineering assessment to see it complies with wind load requirements, and of course, the inspections department would go out and inspect the site.
But he's not making any changes to the building, other than the fact that?
Right, correct.
But basically, somebody complained here, he did it, right?
Right, correct.
And do we know the integrity of the structure? And that's what we will determine.
That's what we'll determine when he submits the proper plans and he submits engineering assessment to see it complies with wind load requirements.
Is there a fine?
There's double the permit fee fine for that.
And is there, are there bathroom facilities or water?
There will be no bathroom or plumbing on that facility, they will have electricity, but no plumbing.
And what's to prevent someone from living there?
Technically, like I said, it doesn't meet the requirements for, to be used as a house, but if it does, that should, you know, be reviewed by code enforcement. At this point, with the permit as for, just for storage and a playroom, pretty much.
What is the actual enclosed square footage?
I would say it's probably half of that, maybe 300.
300?
Little over 300 square feet, probably.
And what is to prevent them from enclosing the carport section?
If they do, they'd have to apply for the proper permits, and that would be, of course, be reviewed by. Because it kinda looks like a little apartment, no?
Yeah, you know, the concern that I had in reading the notes from the P&amp;Z was that the people that had complained were people that had inquired to do the same thing, and so are we setting an example for the rest of the neighborhood? That's the question. And then, with the burden of, okay, so if we say no, what happens to the building?
It would have to be removed, but at this point, we never staffed, never received any application, formal application from any property owner about constructing that.
No, but I think what he's referring to is the future, right? Now you have a home here, whether, he may use it for a game room, somebody else may use it for a apartment, somebody may use it for other uses.
All those would have to come before us again, right?
They would have to come before, they would have to come before.
Assuming that they were compliant with code.
Right, correct.
How old is the structure?
It's just recently built, it's not hurting you.
Like this year, last year?
This year, this.
Did the owner provide a date of when he did it? I mean, and did we, you know, is there a way to verify that, or has it been there for?
He's here present, you can ask him.
Okay, do we know how long it's been there?
He said he built around April or May.
Of this year.
Right, correct.
Okay. So it's really new?
Correct.
Let me go ahead and go to the public hearing, item A. Is there anyone that'd like to speak for or against a specific use permit? Hearing now, I'll close the public hearing then, and go to item B, which is a consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading for a specific use permit to allow storage building greater than 144 square feet, and they both describe residence. Call it from the city attorney to read the caption.
An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the City of Harlingen to issue a specific use permit, SUP to Francisco Carr, to allow a storage building greater than 144 square feet in residential, single-family R1 district located at 506 West Louisiana Street, bearing a legal description of Lot 3, Block 1, Gerlach subdivision, for the following provisions: One, comply for any and all applicable permits. Two, comply with the requirements administered by the planning, zoning, and building inspection department, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the program.
I mean, the P&amp;Z meeting minutes are kind of humorous, really, because you read them and you think that they're gonna deny this thing, and then they just, they proved it.
Correct.
We got one of the commissioners here, so it's just, but, because nobody seems to, nobody on the P&amp;Z commission seemed to like it, but I mean, but the thing's already there, so what do you do?
So is there gonna be like an engineer going in and checking the structure for windstorm?
Yes, he's gonna have to submit, of course, plan, submit an engineering assessment to see it complies with wind load requirements.
Can we table this till we get those results?
You can, if you choose to.
Because based on the results of the windstorm, I think that that's gonna be able to say.
I think from what I understood, because I asked, I did some checking on this, and I understand that even if we approve it, he can't occupy it until, because there's the two statements that are in the ordinance, is that he has to get the permit, number one, and number two, he has to pass the engineering, so, you know, if it passes, it passes, and if it doesn't, he wants to salvage, he'll have to comply. So rather than delaying this, I mean, the structure's there, I can understand where P&amp;Z came from this, because I think we've had one of these or two before, where somebody's done something that's kinda after the fact.
Well, my thing is, are we doing like a one-year, or is this, once you pass it, it's done? I would like to put some kind of, only because they didn't follow the process, this is the problem I have, is when you don't follow the process, and then there's an expectation of, oh, well, I did it, so what are you gonna do now? You know, that in itself sets a bad precedent. I know, so whether it was, you know, I don't think there was bad intent, I'm not going to the process, but we cannot allow people not coming to the permitting process and doing the right things.
Are we allowed to give a term limit on a, on something like this?
It seems to me like it's reasonable that maybe we put some sort of a one-year deal in there, so go back and look at, because, so that he does, I mean.
Yeah, you can add conditions if you choose to, you know, as part of the SUP.
We wanna make sure that he understands that we, he can't make any other modifications to this without going through another process, and so.
Right, correct.
We wouldn't want him to make the other, so this is a case of, instead of asking for permission, he's asking for forgiveness.
Right.
And so, he's gonna have to pay something, but, you know, so what are the wishes and commitments?
Wait, I have a question. So does he have homeowner's insurance on his house?
That I don't know.
And is this included, does his insurance company know that this is included in his homeowner's?
Well, just a fire and everything else.
I can.
That's an issue.
He says for the house, he does have insurance, but for that one, he doesn't have it yet.
Okay, well, he would need to notify his insurance company to cover that, should something happen, the insurance company can easily deny any coverage to that new building. Just a consumer to.
Yeah, that's not a requirement that the city would.
I think, I think part of this, I think as long as he understands that he's asking us to approve this to be used for storage.
Right.
And so that if we go back in a year.
And a game room.
Right, but if we go back in a year, and that use is being utilized as an apartment or something of that sort, then that's gonna be something we're gonna have to consider at that point in time. And so as long as he understands that this is all contingency on what he's brought to us, we're gonna do this in good faith, and we'd ask him to understand the reason we're doing this.
Right, of course, if he uses it for use other than a storage building, game room, the permit could be revoked by the commission if he uses it for an apartment.
And that's the thing about far enough, right?
Did he understand me? I mean, did he say? Okay, good. I would make the motion that we prove it based on what Commissioner Hoodie said, a one-year?
Okay, to add an additional, an additional condition, that it's not, that it not be used as a residence and/or that it not be occupied.
Right.
And that the specific use permit will have to be renewed in one year, and he won't have to apply, pay another additional fee, so is that the motion?
That is the motion, yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, like sign, motion carries. Item 10, consideration and possible action to accept the lowest bid submitted by GLZ Construction LLC for the 2016-17 General Funds Street Improvement Project under bid number 201707.
Good evening, City Commission, Mayor, and our City Manager. The project will consist of work on various streets throughout the city of Harlingen. The project consists of rehab and overlay of existing roadways by removing existing asphalt pavement, adding a reworking caliche base, adding lime treated caliche, tack coat, prime coat, asphalt concrete pavement, concrete pavement, level of pavement markings, manhole adjustments, sidewalks, curb ramps, and driveways. On Wednesday, July 5, the staff received a total of five bids for the proposed project. All bids received met the bits of middle requirements, and they're included in your packet. The lowest bid for the project was submitted by GLZ Construction in the amount of $929,384.60, which includes the base bid, alternate 1 and alternate 2. Staff recommends that we accept the lowest bid submitted by GLZ Construction in the amount of $929,384.60. Do you all have any questions?
I do. I, did we rank them at all? Is there any kind of ranking process? Or you just went to the lowest bidder?
We went to the lowest bidder. We called references.
Dan, can you refresh my memory on the project that was north of, it's off the expressway, behind the Budweiser building, where we're having a problem with, whoever the contractor was doing that, those improvements, they never really got, it was delayed a lot?
Chlor construction?
Chlor.
The current contractor?
No, I don't know.
Where's the, I think that's.
Chlor construction?
That's chlor.
Well, because I thought we were gonna try to move to some kind of ranking system.
Well, I think what I did was, he received a low bid, it was a great bid, so we went ahead and questioned the contractor, right?
Yes, we called references.
Called references. And we followed up, our due diligence on this particular contractor.
But this is, so this is a different.
This is a completely different contract.
Different project.
I was going to say, has GLZ done any work for us before?
Uh, no.
Okay. And they're based out of?
They're out of Edinburgh. We did visit some of the projects they, they're working on currently, they're working on the Verdogt and the.
Okay, and they met all the bonding requirements, they have the right amount of equipment, they have enough cash on hand to fulfill this?
Uh, yes, yes.
Okay, and what are alternates one and alternates two?
Alternate one is a concrete intersection at Dixieland and Lincoln, and alternate two is a, an overlay of asphalt pavement on Gomez Road, right up of Tucker.
Do, do we have a timeframe on, on the scope of work?
I think we gave them a hundred and forty-five days, working days.
And is there a, a penalty if they don't?
A thousand dollars a day.
Okay, so you have something.
Yes.
The bid included sidewalks, uh, well, we had to put in sidewalks, right?
Uh, most of the rule sections, the only one, yeah, so no, sidewalks are already there.
I just want to make sure we protect ourselves, that if, if it gets delayed, like.
Right, this is all district five, for the most part, and yes, it's all, it's all bar ditch.
We noticed.
Should, should we change some of them to?
No.
Okay. I just want to make sure we, we have protectors of in case of.
I'm a very quick lady, though.
Other than brain delays or, you know, anything abnormal.
Correct.
Anything abnormal.
Okay. Uh, any other questions? All right, is there a motion to accept the lowest bids submitted by GLZ Construction?
I make the motion.
I'll say it. All, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, it's a good, it's, it's an excellent price, excellent bid.
Yes, yes, it is.
Keep an eye on it.
Oh, yeah. We, we.
All right, item eleven, consideration of possible action to approve by resolution the acceptance of Federal Aviation Administration grant, offer number three dash forty-eight dash zero-one-on-one dash zero-five-nine dash twenty-seventeen, two million one hundred twenty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars for runway thirty-five L and reconfiguration of Valley International Airport. Mar, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, City Commissioners. Like the mayor said, that recently, the airport received a grant in an amount of two-point-one million dollars and some change to rearrange some of the taxiways at the end of, of the runway, three-five left. It's in the location you see there. The total project cost for this is two-point-eight million dollars. The remaining funds above and beyond the grant will come from PFC applica, or PFC application and PFC funds, that's pasture facility charge funds. We have a pre-construction meeting scheduled for tomorrow, pending the approval tonight. On July seventeenth, the airport board voted unanimously and recommended the City Commission to accept this grant. We're hoping to finish the project by December two thousand seventeen. As you can see there on the left, that's the current configuration of the taxiway system. You can see some of the odd angles that the pilots must maneuver in order to get around that area. This is non-standard, according to F.A. current design standards. This angle down here is impossible for the larger aircraft, the wide-body jets that are utilized by FedEx and DHL in order to traverse that area, so they have to actually take the other location and access the runway about five hundred feet further up from the runway end in order to take off, losing that takeoff distance and also landing distance coming the other direction. The next slide there on the, on the right shows the proposed configuration. This does meet all F.A. guidelines and standards at that point, and you can see that it makes the transvers, the, the, transversing that area much easier and simpler for the pilots and, and reduces the, the possibility of a runway incursion.
So are you removing, like that slab that's there, that's not shown on the second slide?
Yes, yes, everything will just like the second slide there, and there'll be grass in the middle, all of that pavement will come out in the center.
All right, that, that looks great. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign the motion carries. Item twelve, consideration of possible action to adopt city promotion social media policy.
Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. In order to keep up with the changes in technology, the city developed a social media policy. The policy before you was reviewed by administration, human resources, M.I.S., and legal. The, the policy itself establishes standards and responsibilities for use of social media. By creating this policy, the city is not trying to prohibit the use of social media, but actually encourages use, but just provide guidelines for employers to do that. By encouraging the use of social media, we actually can promote city events, assist in the dissemination of information to the public, and just reach a broader audience. Now, the social media policies that were identified here, but they're not limited to this particular, are Facebook, YouTube, Twitter, Pinterest, Google Plus, Instagram, Flickr, Vine, Snapchat, and Tumblr, and others, others are being developed daily, but the, this policy is not exclusive to these only, and any other policies that are, or social media groups are developed, will be covered by this policy as well. Now, I'm not going to go through the, through the entire policy itself, I'll just hit some of the guy, highlights. It does establish policies and guidelines for city employees. It also provides for rules and responsibilities for department directors, which are ultimately responsible for the social media that they oversee in their departments. It identifies unacceptable content for those policies, and it also establishes guidelines for the employees who are employed by the City of Harlingen, but it also establishes guidelines for when they're outside of the work, and what they can and cannot do regarding the use of city logos, patches, emblems, and so forth. That's pretty much the policy, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about it, or add anything that you may suggest.
I have two questions, so if you're encouraging them to like promote the city, or you're sitting here, do you run into where the employee's going to come back and say, well, I'm still working because I'm promoting at a certain event, or is he getting compensated, or is there any, any language in that to protect?
Well, the, the policy is clear, you can only post items that represent the city on official city-approved sites. If employee, if an employee is out at a concert somewhere, he cannot post anything to his personal media, making reference that he is representing the city, or that the city was at that event. If he wants to post anything about the event himself or herself, they're, they're, they can do that, they just can't use our logo, they can't use any city email address.
Right. Are there any cities currently using a similar policy that you looked at, or?
Nobody in the city has, in the valley has a social media policy, although City of McKellon is working on one, they just haven't adopted it yet.
Okay, because I was wondering if we piggybacked off.
No, we, we asked the majority of cities in the valley, nobody had one, but.
But, but the policy, the model that we're using, we did get that from other communities that have social media policies.
We scoured the nation for policies, we took about six that we thought were, were good policies, and then we combined them into this one.
And, and the whole, I guess, reasoning behind the, the fact that you, we need one, or how was, how did this come about?
Well, because we just want to make sure that, that as it gets more and more use because of our festivals, our events, promoting any type of information through social media when it comes to, say, a disaster, that the information that gets put out to the public meets our standards, that it's not something that the employee has a personal view on, but it's a city policy.
Okay. This does not preclude a city employee from going home at night and doing whatever they do on their personal lives.
No, they just can't use our logo, they can't use our email address on their personal sites. That's, that's basically it.
You know, it, it, it attempts to divide the, the two, you know, your personal and, and what you do for the city, and I think it's a good, I, I think it's a good, you know, it's, it's, it's good, sometimes the lines are going to get blurred, I can, I can envision, but I, I think it's a good place to begin, because I think there ought to be a policy that, that addresses these issues, because our departments are using social media more and more, and that's a, I mean, that's a good thing, and they do most of the, mostly it's a good thing, but I can see the, the potential for error or abuse, and so we need to, you know, think, well, I have this policy, I think, I think it's a good thing, so.
I just want to say thank you. You know, the world's changing, and we have to adapt with the world.
Yeah.
That's, that's true.
All right, is there any other questions for Mr. Gonzalez? If none, is there a motion to?
Sorry, did the legal department?
Yes, Mr. Gonzalez and I work together on finalizing.
Okay, so you're in.
Is there a motion to adopt the social media policy presented? Motion second, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like, sign the motion carries. Item thirteen, board appointments. Very important, board appointments. Item fourteen, citizen communication.
I woke up this morning, and I read about the convention center and finalizing all the stuff that's going to happen, you know, they say, we build, they come, the only problem is that, I came one time to one of the meetings that they had, and they showed all the designs of the three, I think there were three, and the one that you all chose, unless it has changed, that I have been attending a meeting, it was all glass and bars. And everybody started a rumor that they were going to build a jailhouse in Harlingen, and I says, no, 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 it's not a jailhouse, it is a convention center, why all the glass and all the bars? Well, because somebody's got to wash the windows, we're going to have jobs, that's a good thing, you know? And then they said, oh, well, we know, they started to say that it was going to bring a lot of people and everything, but then the water bill went up to fix the streets, because you've got to have streets to get there, you know? I know Reyna real, real well, the attorney, so he's going to come out looking really good, you know? And I happen to have been in San Antonio, and I met the developer of the one that's going to bring the, what is it, Hilton Garden or Garden Hilton or something like that, the hotel, but are we going to be able to fill up the beds and heads? See, that's another thing, you know? I mean, we're not getting good publicity on this convention center at all, because where's the money? We have to have good police officers, the police officers are, are, are quitting, they're going somewhere else, we have rookies, and we're going to need a lot of police officers to protect and to serve the community. Remember, it is the taxpayers, the citizens, who you're going to have to answer to, and this is going a little too fast, and I'll tell you something, it's looking to be a catastrophe, it's not going to be good. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
No one else.
All right, then that concludes our meeting, we are adjourned, thank you all very much.